Call to order, the meeting of the Verona City Council on Monday, January 14th at 7:01 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
President.
Alder Person Gaskell. Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
President.
Alder Person Ricky is absent and excused.
Thank you. Next up, we will have public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so, and when you do, if you could give your name and address, that would be helpful as well.
I didn't know if this was the time to do this. I'm Gene Crop. I live on Cabrillo Drive, and we had some flooding in our house, and I guess I just wanted to review quickly what had happened and what we had done. A year and a half ago, there was a development behind Cabrillo Drive on Cross Point Estates, and I called the city with some pretty serious concerns because they had elevated the land so much that where the water used to run from the east to the west and then off to the south, it was running straight to the west and right into all of our lots. And so even during development, I had talked with the engineers in the city and discussed the issues that I thought we would have. And then we were told that there was a drainage plan at that time where the water would run from the north to the south and would not affect our property. And but during some of the storms and things, the water was continuing to run onto our property, and there was standing water most of the summer. In the winter, after the development was done, there was a rain slash snowstorm, and there was so much water coming off the land that it moved across my side lot. And there was so much water that went to our front sidewalk, actually froze. There was two to three inches of ice. Fortunately, it got warm, and so the ice melted, and it wasn't terrible, but it was an issue. We were told that the inspectors were there to make sure that the development was done right and that the lots would be inspected to make sure that the landscaping would flow the water to the sides. All summer, we had a lot of problems with water, and so a plan was devised to put a drainage system on the south end of that development to pull the water away, but that wasn't put in. The developer delayed doing that. And so when one of the houses were put in, just to the south of me, when they did the landscaping, they elevated the landscaping even more, which prevented even more water from going to the south. And when we had the big storm last year, that water flowed through my side lot and into an egress window and flooded my basement. So even now, with the -- the system was put in the following week. The developer was forced to do that. But even now, with small rainstorms, there's still a lot of puddling there, and that landscaping hasn't been changed. And so those of us on the north side of that house still have a lot of water behind our lots and so forth. So there's still some risks that we're concerned about this winter, you know, with the water going down and causing some freezing on our sidewalks. I don't know that it will flood our house again. The city sandbagged our egress window, and we've left the sandbags, and so we're safe there. But yet, even now, as of last week, there was a rainstorm, and the water had filled up the entire area back there. So I was directed to submit the costs for the damage that was done. A lot of the damage I repaired myself, but we did have to have Ser Pro and many of the -- some contractors come in, as well as the carpet replaced. So any questions?
Any questions for the speaker? Alder Touche.
I was briefly.
Oh, sorry. You breathed so loud, I thought. Seeing no questions.
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other people for public comment?
Good evening. My name's Steve Wohlweider. I live at 308 Valley View Street here in Verona. I'm here tonight to seek reimbursement for water damages due to city sewer backup that ultimately flooded my basement. And I am under the understanding that because I'm the lowest drain in the neighborhood, when this line was surcharged with water runoff, that's why it came up in my basement. And so I'm here seeking help from the city. As I indicated to the members of the Public Works Committee earlier tonight, I'm only seeking the amount less what my insurance paid.
Do you want to tell us a little bit more about that?
About?
The what? What actually backed up it? Was it just the storm water?
It was sewer water that came up through my drain, yes. What happened was the line got charged from water running into homes upstream from me and got into their sewer lines. The line is supercharged. I understand that these are independent and separate lines, the sewer and the storm water are separate lines. However, the storm sewer, the city sewer line was compromised by storm runoff. And because of that, my drain being the lowest, that's where it came up, flooded the whole basement.
Thank you for your testimony.
Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? This is different than Plowing Commission, which has separate public hearings for the city council. We have one opportunity for public comment, so if you want to make a public comment, speak now or hold your peace. Seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we will move on to approval of the minutes from the December 10th, 2018 Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, motions?
We have approval.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the December 10th, 2018 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next up, we will move on to mayor's business. And this is, I have one thing under here, which is the Adult Crossing Guard Week proclamation, which I am going to read to you all. Whereas Verona's adult school crossing guards provide individual service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school, and whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, and heavy traffic, and whereas for more than four decades, adult school crossing guards have served the Verona community, and whereas adult school crossing guards have helped reinforce in the minds of the young people they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior, and whereas school assemblies, school board resolutions, police department support, parent-teacher organization observations, local news coverage, and especially kind words from children will help to convey the gratitude of our community for the life-saving, injury-reducing role that Verona's adult school crossing guards play. Now, therefore, I, Luke Diaz, Mayor of the City of Verona, do hereby proclaim January 14th through January 18th, 2019, as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week in the City of Verona, and I invite all citizens to join me in this recognition. And I guess I would also just like to say that I think the school crossing guards have a really tough job, dealing, you know, with impatient drivers, wrangling kids, but, you know, they keep kids safe and they keep things running smoothly. So I just want to say as mayor that I really appreciate the job that they do. And that's all I got for mayor's business. Next, we'll move on to item seven, announcements. If any members of the council have announcements, Alder Journey.
So I would just like to make a comment. I was having a conversation with one of our residents a couple of weeks ago, wondering if we took recommendations from the community, and I said, definitely. And her comment was, and she had moved here from another Midwestern town or city that had switched over to all LED lighting, and as a result of that, significantly reduced their energy costs for the city. So I posed that to Theron Jacobson, who is our Director of Public Works, and he responded that the city only owns the blue lights along East-West Verona Avenue, the black poles on South Main Street, and any lighting associated with traffic signals, and that all other lights are owned by Alliant Energy and rented by the City of Verona. Now, any, if there's any light changes that need to be made, they are being switched over to LEDs. So I thought that was a positive thing. And it's just not a matter of changing a light bulb. A whole system needs to be switched out. So as maintenance is done on the lights around Verona, they are being switched over to LED lighting, just an FYI.
Thank you for that. Other announcements from the Alder Cronin.
One of the other roles I have in service of the city is to sit on the Senior Services Committee. And we met last week, and attending that meeting, in addition to the committee, is the Friends of the Senior Center Board, and they are actively looking for new board members. So if anyone is interested in serving on a board that supports our fantastic senior center, the only requirement is that you're age 55 or older. They meet, I think, the second Wednesday, don't quote me on that for sure, of the month. It is a morning meeting. They usually meet from 9:00 to 11:00. But they do fundraising to support the communal meals at the senior center and bringing in activities and all of the fantastic services that are offered through the senior center. So if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, you can check out their website at veronaactiveadults.org.
Thank you. Other announcements from the Common Council? Seeing none, we will move on to item eight, Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Just two items today. Dean County Cities and Villages Association will have their next meeting, January 16th. That's a Wednesday at noon. It'll be held at the Madison Municipal Building. That's 215 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, room 206. And with the legislature starting, a lot of issues we'll be looking at, the different bills that would be coming up before them, including the assessment legislation or dark store legislation. So if you're interested in learning more about that, that'll be on Wednesday, January 16th. Also, tomorrow, Tourism Commission has been canceled by the chair, and I just want to let everyone know about that.
Thank you. Questions on the Administrator's Report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Engineers' Report.
Thank you. So I'll highlight some of the active projects going on in the city. For the Well 6 Pumping Station Construction Project, the contractors installed the water main from Wayland Road north and into the Well 6 site. The water main has been flushed and sampled. Pressure testing of the main will happen next. The water main installation is necessary to provide the well driller with water during the drilling process. Sanitary sewer installation will commence once the permit is issued by the DNR. For the Fireman's Park Splash Pad Project, the contractor has begun construction of the building shell and roof. All other activities have been placed on hold until the spring. The Silent Street Pond Drudging Project is now complete, except for the restoration of the banks, which is on hold until the spring, but the dredging piece is complete. For the County Highway PD Woods Road to County Highway M Project, AECOM has submitted 90% plans to the city for review. And for the County Highway M Reconstruction Project, the contractors completed the water main and sanitary sewer installation for the City of Verona Utilities that can be installed this year. Testing of the new water main and sanitary sewer has yet to be completed. I think that's about it in terms of active projects.
Thank you. Questions on the Engineers' Report? All right. Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to item 10, Committee Reports. We'll start with item A, Finance Committee, Alder Cronin.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the city bills in the amount of $15,681,491.33.
Motion by Alder Cronin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Cronin.
So by way of explanation, you thought your Christmas bills were bad. The bulk of that very large dollar amount is our tax payments to the Verona School District, the M A T C, and Dane County. There are some insurance payments that are annual and quarterly that have hit in January, and some larger construction payments for work on M that are also included in this amount.
Thank you. Motion before us, questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Cronin.
I will also make a motion with the recommendation from the Finance Committee to approve Dane's.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the claim from Progressive Insurance on October 11th, 2018, for a vehicle accident. The total dollar amount for that claim would be $3,950.63.
Motion by Alder Cronin. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to say seconded by Alder Posey, Alder Cronin.
So this was an accident that happened on the roundabout near Pleasant View Road on M involving a city police car and a private vehicle. The police car was at fault. It thankfully was a low-speed accident, so there were no injuries, but the insurance company did recommend totaling the vehicle, so.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the claim as advised by Progressive Insurance for the incident October 11th, 2018, in the amount specified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Finance, Alder Cronin?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we will move on to 10B Personnel Committee. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. Item 10B1 is seeking an amendment to the City of Verona Family and Medical Leave Policy. Currently, our policy requires employees to use all of their accrued leave during the federal FMLA period. The change would make it so that people have to use four weeks minimum, and then after that, it's up to them. If the employee remains covered under FMLA after the four-week threshold, the city may require the employee, or the employee may choose to continue to substitute accrued leave for which they are eligible to mitigate wage loss, or they may choose to use other benefits to supplement their income while on leave. And this provides flexibility for the employee. The way this came up is that applying this across the board, we end up punishing some of our staff who've accrued a lot of leave by forcing them to take all of their leave when someone else who started much later than them could take advantage of the disability insurance that much quicker. If you look in your packet, the language change is, it's a seven-page policy, and then there's a page after that which shows that the actual language change is. If you have any further questions, Mitch is here and available to answer them.
Thank you. So is there a motion, then, to amend the policy as described in the packet?
I will make that motion, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Any comments or questions on changing the policy? Alder Touche.
I'm curious, how does this policy compare to what other municipalities in Dane County do?
Who'd like to take that? Mitch, or?
Yeah, sure.
Can you come to the microphone?
Yeah.
Either. And introduce yourself. You've only been here for like a month.
I'm Mitch Weckerly. I'm the new HR Coordinator here with the City of Verona. The policy is similar to what other municipalities, I guess, are using. Under the federal FMLA rules, the employer can do both. So they can require the substitution of leave, or they can allow the employees to choose, or some combination of each. Prior to this, we were kind of requiring that use of leave for the entire time. A lot of policies or a lot of employers will just kind of leave that open. So there's not a ton of consistency there. So here, we're, in a way, establishing that we're going to require some sort of substitution of leave. Part of, I guess, the substitution of leave, what that is kind of rooted in is to help curb potential FMLA abuse, if you will. So like, one example would be, an employee might be less likely to go on FMLA for an illegitimate reason if they know that they're going to have to substitute some type of leave, for example, some sort of earned leave. So the policy really just kind of makes it so we're being a little bit more consistent. We're still protecting ourselves. We're still requiring some sort of substitution of leave, but then also kind of giving some flexibility back to the employee when it comes to, I guess, you know, if it is a long-time employee, maybe they don't want to exhaust their entire leave bank during that 12 weeks of federal FMLA. They can decide maybe they want to take it unpaid, or maybe they have some sort of benefit based on the type of FMLA leave they're on that they can use to kind of mitigate some of that loss. So it still allows us that flexibility to require both, which most municipalities have, but it's just kind of establishing that kind of consistent, at least four-week minimum that we'll be requiring upfront.
So when you say most municipalities, which ones have you compared us to?
So Manona, Middleton. I've also looked at, so just a couple of cities. Also Madison as well. So their policies are, the wording might not be quite as specific, but the intent of the policy is still there. We're just trying to make sure that our employees are kind of aware. Having that specific timeline also is going to help our employees when they go to elect what benefits that we offer to them, which is an important part of, a great benefit for working for the city, too, so.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mitch, as long as he's up here? All right. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of amending the City of Verona Family and Medical Leave Policy as described by Alder Gaskell, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Personnel at the moment?
No, thank you.
All right. Next up, we will move on to item 10C, Park, Recreation, and Forestry Commission. For this, I'd like Mr. Walker, if he could come up and give us a summary of the item, and then I'll turn it over to Alder Journey.
So as you recall, back at the October, I believe the second meeting in October, we approved, or you approved, an amended field use agreement with Edgewood College. There was a type one under a couple omissions, and I'll take full blame for that. At the Park Board, what I did is I took the signed copy out of the file cabinet, photocopied it, and we reviewed that at the meeting with Edgewood in attendance. I highlighted the changes that we were going to make to the agreement at that time. Then when I went back, I pulled up the version that I thought was the same. It was on my computer, changed the appropriate sections, and omitted reading the rest, but sent it to the council while there was some language in it. It was essentially a draft agreement that was negotiated back in '08. But it was different than the final, and I didn't catch it. So then, when it was approved here, signed, sent to Edgewood, they caught it. And essentially, the biggest change was, in the document you looked at, it said that in 2000, there was a section that said in 2017, which was actually last year, Edgewood would begin paying a field use fee equal to the resident rate. But there's also another section, which we hadn't amended, that said in 2017, the city and Edgewood would basically evaluate what their inputs are to the field, because they do quite a bit of work down there, and also buy a lot of materials for the field. So we keep track of that and periodically look at that and base that on what they would pay if we were to charge them a straight field use fee. And the Park Board has always felt that it was really to the city's advantage being an arrangement where they didn't pay cash, that they paid in kind services. And we would agree that that's been a good setting. So they asked to extend the agreement in exchange for putting a new scoreboard up, which should be going up in the next month or so. Asked that that basically get extended out another five years so that in 2023, we would revisit their inputs versus what our expenses are to the field. And that language has remained in the agreement, basically. And then a couple other small changes. There was a line in there that said they wouldn't start practice until 6:00 unless mutually agreed on by both parties. In practice, they've always started at 5:30 or shortly after the high school's done. And that's been a good arrangement. So we just clarified that language. And then there was another one that said what the nature of the scoreboard would be that they're putting in. It's, initially, was going to be a scrolling scoreboard, but because of the size of the scoreboard, that we, the frame that we have to put it on, and that it's 350 feet away, a six-inch letter scrolling across, you wouldn't really be able to see it very well anyway. So we decided against the scrolling messaging scoreboard. So one major change due to an omission and two minor changes. And so what you have before you tonight is actually the final amended agreement, as it should have been, out of the Park Board in September.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Walker while he's up here? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Alder Journey.
I would like to make a motion, a motion to approve amendment to Stanful Field Joint Use Agreement between the City of Verona and Edgewood Incorporated.
Motion by Alder Journey. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to say second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Journey?
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments, other motions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendments to the Stanful Field Joint Use Agreement between the City of Verona and Edgewood, Inc., say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Thank you. It's good to get that correct. Next up, we will have Public Safety and Welfare Committee, and I'm turning it over to Alder Cole.
I'm making a motion to approve 10D1 Class B Beer and Class C Wine License applications for Mr. Bruce Tap House Verona LLC, 611 Hometown Circle, Verona, Daniel L. Johnson agent.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Second by Alder Journey. Alder Cole.
Daniel Johnson is purchasing Mr. Bruce Tap House from the current owner, Derek Denain, and has applied for a new license for the property. The property is scheduled to change hands tomorrow, January 15th. The business will be closed while there's some interior remodeling that's taking place with a tentative reopening date of February 1st. Mr. Johnson is also the owner of Mr. Bruce Tap House in Plover, Wisconsin. The motion for this item, yes, to recommend the approval of the Class B Beer and Class C Wine License.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of granting the Class B Beer and Class C Wine License applications for Mr. Bruce Tap House Verona LLC, 611 Hometown Circle, Verona, Wisconsin, Daniel L. Johnson agent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Cole.
All right. 10D2, making a motion to approve ordinance number 19-935, amending section 10-1-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Verona related to parking on Lincoln Street.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Cole.
All right. In 2017, the city passed an ordinance restricting parking on the west side of Lincoln Street, across the street from the Verona Area Community Theater and in front of the former Seacor property. The V A C T building opened in 2017, causing additional vehicles to park on Lincoln Street and impacted semi-truck deliveries to Seacor. The city approved an ordinance restricting that parking on Lincoln Street during Seacor business hours to ensure the semis could back into the property. Since the adoption of the ordinance, Seacor has moved out, and the city has approved plans for apartments to be constructed on the former Seacor property. Restricting parking in this location is no longer necessary.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 19-935, amending section 10-1-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Verona relating to the parking on Lincoln Street as described. as described by Alder Cole, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, Alder Cole.
Okay, onto 10D3, making a motion to approve resolution number R-19-001, establishing a fee for City of Verona Chicken License.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Second by Alder Journey, Alder Cole.
In October of 2018, the city passed an ordinance allowing for the keeping of chickens in the city. The ordinance states, "The license fees shall be established by resolution by the common council." The proposed resolution would establish an annual fee of $20 per household for licensing, a license allowing up to four chickens per property. It includes a late fee of $5 if the license is not obtained by March 31st of any year. The $20 annual household fee is similar to the fees charged by nearby municipalities.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution R-19-001, establishing a fee for the City of Verona Chicken License, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from public safety, Alder Cole?
That should be it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we will move on to 10E, Plan Commission, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-19-002, approving a certified survey map to create three lots at the southwest corner of West Verona Avenue and Legion Street. The proposed certified survey map will create-
Motion by, motion by Alder, that's okay. Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, Alder Gaskell.
The proposed survey map will create three lots for the Sugar Creek Commons Redevelopment Project along West Verona Avenue. This is necessary in order to resolve a lot line issue that divides the underground parking structure. Plan Commission reviewed this on January 7th and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-19-002, approving a certified survey map to create three lots for the Sugar Creek Commons Development Project located at the southwest corner of West Verona Avenue and Legion Street, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. Like to make a motion approving resolution R-19-003, approving a conditional use permit amendment for a greenhouse building to be located at 1979 Milky Way.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Didn't catch who that was. Seconded by Alder Cronin, Alder Gaskell.
The proposed conditional use permit would allow for the construction of a 30, 3,120 square foot greenhouse building for Epic's Horticulture Team along Country View Road. Plan Commission held the required public hearing on January 7th and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-19-003, approving a conditional use permit for a greenhouse building to be located at 1979 Milky Way, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion approving resolution R-004, approving a subdivision replat for lands located within the Kettle Creek North subdivision and requesting the vacation of areas dedicated to the public on a recorded plat.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Journey, Alder Gaskell.
The proposed replat would create 33 single-family lots in the Kettle Creek North neighborhood, and it's necessary to accommodate an onsite stormwater pond for the development. As part of the project, existing lands within the subdivision that were previously dedicated to the public for park purposes and public right-of-way will be replatted in order to accommodate a stormwater management facility, realignment of the public right-of-way and other land for park purposes. The process for completing the parkland dedication modifications is a longer, more complicated process for the applicant. State statute requires the vacation to be filed with Dane County Circuit Court for review and approval after the replat is conditionally approved here. Once the Circuit Court acts on the vacation, the plat will be officially approved and recorded, the replat will be. Plan Commission held the required public hearing on January 7th and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval with the following condition: Subject to Dane County Circuit Court vacation, the portion of the plat included in the replat, including the vacation of areas dedicated to the public.
Thank you, and, and it's my understanding that those conditions were part of the motion that you made?
Yes.
And that was the understanding of the second as well? Okay. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-19-004, approving a subdivision replat for lands located within the Kettle Creek North subdivision and requesting the vacation of areas dedicated to the public on a recorded plat, say, with the condition specified, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, Alder Gaskell.
I can make a motion to approve ordinance 19-936, rezoning lots in the Kettle Creek North subdivision to neighborhood residential and/or and public institutional, P.I.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Journey, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you, the proposed zoning map amendment would rezone the single-family parcels of the Kettle Creek North replat to neighborhood residential and the stormwater pond and park to public institutional. Plan Commission held the required public hearing on January 7th, voted six to zero to recommend for approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number R, excuse me, number 19-936, rezoning lots in Kettle Creek North subdivision to neighborhood residential and public institutional, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a discussion item only, I believe. Item 10E5, Verona Area School District Community Information Sign on City-Owned Property Located East of West End Circle, South of West End Avenue, North of Half Mile Road, and West of Nine Mound Road. Basically, the school district is proposing a community information sign on a city-owned property along West Verona Avenue. The sign would be approximately 16 feet tall, would include a 31-square-foot electronic message center, and be approximately 80 feet from West Verona Avenue. Plan Commission discussed the sign at our meeting, and we had questions regarding the types of messages on the sign, the hours of operation, what other sign options were considered, potential impact to city utilities in the area, and how often will the messages change. Comments also included a desire for the district to consider a material that doesn't necessarily match the school district building, the high school building is gonna be brick, right now the sign is designed as brick, someone suggested maybe it'd be something different, and a desire to work with the district on the sign. If the project moves forward, the request will require a conditional use permit and an agreement with the city. Council's encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required, as this is the conceptual review of the project.
Thank you for that explanation. Feedback from the council? Alder Ricky?
Thanks, I would just like to get more information about why this needs to be located on city property rather than school district property, as I'm currently opposed to placing it on city property.
Mr. Sayer, or, Mr. Sayer?
I don't see the applicant here tonight, so I'll do my best to answer the questions. They were aware of the meeting, and my understanding is they were sending a person, so. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't see you just, I was looking for hands. So my understanding is the district is looking for visibility on, from Verona Avenue. They don't have that from their current property. So the property they have in the high school right now is, has frontage along Highway 18151, but they have no frontage along West Verona Avenue. So they have a desire to have the sign with, with frontage, so it would be visible from, from West Verona Avenue. So that's the, the reason for the location, the request tonight.
Additional questions, Alder Ricky? I, I have one, Mr. Sayer. Have we gotten answers to our questions from Plan Commission? If the applicant would like to? And of course, if you, if you could introduce yourself as well.
I'm Jessica Chabon, I'm representing Verona Area School District this evening. I work for JSD Professional Services. I wasn't at the Plan Commission meeting, I was in warmer weather at that time, which was very much appreciated at this point. In terms of sign content, really, I think we're limited in terms of how, how many times it can change. I think we're limited to the 30, 30 seconds, once every 30 seconds. In terms of content, we're really looking at event-type advertising. So like, there's a performing arts center, there'll be football games, there'll be community announcements when schools in session, when it's not in session. Those types of announcements would be the things that you would be expecting to see on the, on the sign. In terms of the conditional use and the, and the location, I think, I think the, we'll continue to work with staff through the conditional use process, and there's obviously standards there that we'll, that we'll have to address and adhere to. So we'll, we'll continue to work through those as we refine the, the concept plan for the sign. In terms of the location, we looked at a couple of other things, but when you think about visibility and where the community is traveling the most and how you're gonna have the most impact, this location seemed to make more sense than anything on the actual 18151 corridor. The most of the community, as well as buses and parents for drop-off, people passing by, people that are visiting the facility to do other things, like go to the theater, or go to band, or go to a football game, will be driving on the West Verona corridor, not necessarily the 18151. So we thought in terms of having the most community impact and getting the word out, would, this location would make sense in terms of that. Were there other specific questions I could-
Yeah, what about the hours of operation?
Hours of operation, so in terms of the sign, I think the sign will be on 24/7. It's like, I, I think about it as, as any other sign that's there, whether it's lit or not, you can see the sign 24/7. So this one, of course, has a limitation, because it will be a lit sign for how many times it can turn over in a minute, but the light will be on 24/7.
Thank you, any, Alder Tuchet?
Are you aware that it's, the placement that you proposed is on top of our sanitary sewer?
So we haven't, we're aware of the utilities in the area. We haven't done specific locates at this point. At this time, we don't believe that utilities will be an issue.
So I'm gonna ask the open question, I mean, if the sanitary sewer needs to get worked on, how's this sign get dealt with? Is it a portable sign that can easily be moved aside? Or would the school be interested in moving it while the sewer gets worked on?
So if there is a, well, first of all, we need to establish whether or not there's a true conflict with the, in terms of the sign location, footings, foundations, those sorts of things. The intent would be to leave enough space and clearance to allow for any sort of utility construction or repair to occur.
I think this needs to be figured out before we can vote on this personally.
And I think that would be something that would definitely, as we continue to move forward, because at this point, we're really at, just at a concept very high level. When we do come back, we would definitely have the answers to those questions. The idea with this concept plan is really to have you guys thinking about the location, because it does require us to, the school district, not us, but the school district, to enter into an agreement with the city, because it is city property. So the, the big thing for us in walking away from this evening is getting some pretty solid direction in terms of whether the council would be willing to support this as a potential sign location or not.
Thank you. Just questions for the school representative while she's up here? Alder Gaskell?
Yeah, just an email that was sent in with a couple of questions from a resident, wondering when we're calling it a community sign. Is it really a community sign, or is it specifically information about the high school?
I think it's both, really, at this point. Simply because you have a couple of different community facilities that will be sharing uses, specifically the swimming pool and the performing arts center. There'll be non-academic events happening in both of those places.
Okay, thank you, and then, yeah, I think that's it.
Any other questions for the, Alder Ricky?
I just had a general question about the other considerations for placement on Verona Avenue. How far away from the road does the school district property begin? And, and would it be completely not visible?
From the school, or from?
From the road. So like, how far away from the road would the sign need to be in order to be on school district property? And would it be visible from the road?
Okay, I, I don't know how far away the school district property is from West Verona Avenue, but I know that if you put a sign on the school district property, and you will not see it from West Verona Avenue.
Okay, and I just had another concern that I hope you'll address about safety of the teenage drivers-
Sure.
-driving by the sign and gawking because it's so cool, or whatever. Just the safety aspect of having a big sign on Verona Avenue right by the high school, where there's gonna be a lot of new drivers.
So at this, I, I guess I, I'm not understanding, oh, sorry.
Did you, that, that was just a general comment, right? Thank you. Last chance for questions for the school representative.
I think we just need further, further clarification. This was brought up at Plan, Plan Commission as well. Whether or not it's gonna be one of these signs that's like on the Belt Line for Ganzer, that's the flashing advertisement, solid LED, all red at some times, or if it's more like the signs on the Belt Line, one-color LED, you know, telling you the exit time for Todd Drive or something like that. That's a pretty big distinction, I think that's what, what I'm hearing a lot of people are worried about, is this gonna be a garish advertising-type sign, if it's on 24/7, lighting up the neighborhood. So if we can get clarification on that. Personally, I don't have a problem with the location as long as it's clear who's responsible for paying for things. If we do need to get in there and, and do anything with utilities, that the school district is bearing that cost and not the city.
Thank you. Any other questions for the school representative? Okay, thank you for answering the questions. I, I do wanna make one general comment, this was brought up at Plan Commission, is that in the event that the utilities needed to be worked on, the, we, the staff wanted an agreement with the school district that if the sign got damaged while the utilities would be, were worked on, that city wouldn't have to pay for the, the sign. But Alder Tuchet?
Can part of that include if we incur additional cost to avoid impacting the sign? That is also covered by the school?
If we want to, I mean, it ultimately come to the, the, what the council wants.
I mean, I mean, I get what they wanna do, and I think it's a great idea. It's just, you know, this wasn't very, you know, how much was it considered up until this point? And looking at the infrastructure that's around it, so that's all.
Thank you. Alder Cronin?
So this probably is the question for Mr. Sayer. There is gonna be new commercial development that will be right on West Verona Avenue. And my assumption is that they may also want some kind of signage for that property, similar to what we see in front of Farman Fleet. Where would that go in relation to where the school district is proposing this sign?
So the, the project to the west is the Steve Brown Apartments Project, which is about 29,000 square feet of commercial space. As part of that PIP plan development, we did approve signage for that. There is a, a 14-foot-tall monument sign that would be at the southwest corner of West End Circle and West Verona Avenue. That would be just, just kinda off where the right-of-way is. So we'd have the sign at that southwest corner, we'd have the sign on the other side of West End Circle, 80 feet back from West Verona Avenue. And then to the south there, we also have the Urbach Property, the Urbach Trust Property. And, you know, most likely, they're gonna be looking at a sign as well, too. So you'll have, you'll have three signs in that area. I'm not sure how big the Urbach Trust one would be, but you're gonna have, at least with the Steve Brown Apartments sign, that's 14 feet tall. And then you have this sign, which is 16 feet tall, but in a hole. And then back from there, you'll have the Urbach Trust sign as well.
Alder Kemp?
What currently is the, the largest sign that we do have in the city before any of these? The height, I, I should say.
We have the Farman Fleet signs, which I believe are 12 or 14 feet. We also have a sign at the Vincenzo Plaza, which is at Willand and County Highway, Old County Highway PB. So we do allow multi-tenant signs to be taller and larger, and that's based upon the speed limit of the actual roads. The faster the road, the bigger the sign they can be granted. But those are the two off the top of my head that, that kinda come to mind are the biggest ones we have.
Thank you, other questions, comments? Question for Mr. Sayer, do you feel like you have enough to go on what the council's potential position is as far as negotiations go?
I, I think from an agreement standpoint, I think we're in a, in a good spot. I think generally what I'm hearing from the majority of the council is they're open to the conversation of having a sign on the property, but it's gonna depend on the details of that agreement. So we, we have enough, I think, to go back and see if the district is open or wanting to move forward with those conversations.
Thank you. Last chance for feedback on the sign.
Mr. Mayor? Adam, I'd also like to know if there's gonna be advertising on the sign. I'm not sure if the school districts are restricted anyway, but, you know, trying to make some more money by offering up some signage space.
Yep, we can, that's one of the things we can look into as part of that agreement.
Last chance for feedback on the signs? Seeing none. You'll, before we move into Public Works, anything further from Plan Commission, Alder Gaskell?
No, thank you.
And next up, we will move on to 10F, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Alder Tuchet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, fortunately, uh, this evening, we have some unfun items, um, some litigation against the city after our big rain event, uh, last summer. Um, the first three items under our agenda, um, are all related to that event and are closed, uh, session items. Um, at committee level, we did discuss them and thought it was appropriate to move rather quickly in the closed session, discuss them, and then after closed session, uh, if we want to, uh, give us an opportunity to talk about each of the properties and go from there. Uh, so with that...
Uh, can I ask you one quick question?
Yes, of course.
Since we have some people in the audience who are probably very interested in the, the results, can you, can you ballpark how long this is going to take? Um, because it's, you know, we're going to kick everyone out and then it's going to be waiting. I mean, we, this is just, people can obviously do whatever they want.
So I would say at committee level, we spent about 30 to 40 minutes on it.
Okay. Each? Okay.
It seemed like it, that was for sure. Yeah, it could, it, it can run a while, as, as long as an hour.
Would staff be able to notify the claimants by tomorrow with, with... Okay. So we're going to go into closed session most likely, so if you guys want to stick around, you can. If you want to head home, you can also do that as well. Alder Touche?
Thank you. At this, so if it's okay with the council, I'm going to combine the first three items and the one closed session item?
Uh, Mr. Kline Meyer, is that, I'll ask our attorney.
Well, it's going to be the same on everything. You can, you can do one roll call vote. The safest thing to do is to read it three times at least.
All right, I want to read, uh, three closed session items.
All right, Alder Touche?
All right, for item, uh, 10F1, I make an emotion to move into closed session under client, for claim at 708 Cabrio Drive. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental
Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky?
Aye. 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 Aye.
body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the
Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell?
body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? All right, with that, we will go into closed session as soon as we're off the air.
Aye. 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 Aye.
The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the
Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
subject matter discussed in closed session.
Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
Thank you.
Aye. 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 Aye.
This is a roll call vote.
Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin? Alder Cronin?
If the clerk would read the roll?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Cronin? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Gaskell? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Journey? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Kemp? Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Cole? Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Posey? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky? Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Ricky? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Touche?
Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
Aye. All right, next up, uh, item 10F2. 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 This is for insurance claim at 308 Valley Street. This is for insurance claim at 308 Valley Street. This is for insurance claim at 308 Valley Street. This is for insurance claim at 308 Valley View Street. This is for insurance claim at 308 Valley Street. Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute Uh, the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental 19 dot 85, paren one, paren G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. 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 subject matter discussed in closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If the clerk would read the roll? 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 If the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell? Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey? Alder Journey?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp? Alder Kemp?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole? Alder Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey? Alder Posey?
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am making a motion to approve project closeout for change order number one for project ID 2017-113, County Highway M and Locust Drive pedestrian improvements.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. Alder Touche.
Thank you, I just need to get back to my notes here. This is for the pedestrian crossing. That was just wrapped up along County Highway M. Everything went very well on this project. There were some, I'm going by memory because I can't find my notes real quick. Water retention, or was it, it's, Mr. Jacobson, would you fill me in here? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Touche. Pre-se completed the pedestrian project along Locust and M. The change order number one is basically just to close out the contract and rectify as-built quantities for the project. The original contract value was $1,295,570, $70.25. To rectify the as-built quantities, we had some additional restoration due to the extent of the project, increasing some, and it was basically additionally erosion madding and such forth. The add was $1,964.08, bringing the total contract value to $1,297,531.09.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the project closeout and change order as described by Alder Touche, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Before we move on to item 11, Old Business, I'd like to ask for your unanimous consent to move on to 12A regarding the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau topic. Does anyone object? Because I understand we have someone in the audience, and I apologize, I did not realize that this was coming up and I would have brought it up sooner, but can at least get you out of here a little faster. With that, Mr. McCorskey?
Sure. Resolution approving the agreement between Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau doing business as Destination Madison and the City of Verona for room tax collections.
Do we need a motion? Yeah, but if you could provide that.
Sure. Due to the restructuring of the Greater Madison Convention Visitors Bureau and the Greater Madison Sports Commission, the agreement for the room taxes with the city, the current agreement needs to be replaced. This agreement takes the place of the previous agreements, providing the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau 6% of the city's 70% of room tax collections collected for tourism, supporting the GM-CVB activities, and an additional 70% of the 1% increased room rate in 2010, which comes out to about 10% of the 70% of room taxes collected, for the specific purpose of sports promotions and sports event solicitation. The Tourism Commission approved and recommended the agreement to the City Council on December 18th, 2018. What I'm, I would like to add is that in the document itself, it says 10% of the 70%. That's an error, it should be 6% of the 70% collected for tourism, room tax collections. So any motion would need to add a correction.
Caveat. Thank you for that explanation. Anyone want to take a crack at the motion, or any questions or comments? Alder Journey.
Motion that we approve the agreement between the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Microphone. Microphone.
I move that we approve the resolution of an agreement between the Greater Madison and Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated, DBA Destination Madison, and the City of Verona for room tax collections.
And would that include the correction that Mr. McCorskey described? Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Journey?
No.
General questions or comments from the council?
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. McCorskey.
There's one also, there's one document in the packet that talks about the benefits of the agreement. Through the mayor, there can be recommendations to have people sitting on different subcommittees of this new organization. And there are three, there are three subcommittees that we can have people on to get tied into the CBB as it is set up right now.
For sake of discussion, what are the subcommittees, do you know?
Yeah.
If you don't have, we can actually just email it out.
No, it's in the packet. It is. We believe the Sports Commission itself, and then the Community Relations Committee, and the Sports Production, I'm sorry, Sports Product Development Committee. Those are the three committees that we can have people established for the City of Verona.
Thank you. Have a motion on the floor? Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-005, approving an agreement between the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., DBA Destination Madison, and the City of Verona with the correction described, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we will move on.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to item 11, New Bus, or no, I'm sorry. Item 11, Old Business. Discussion and possible action regarding requests for proposals for assessment services. Mr. McCorskey, can we do any of this in open session?
Sure. The city received two bids for assessment services, Associated Appraisal Consultants and Accurate Appraisal LLC, provided were the costs for property record maintenance, reassessment services, and full market maintenance of services of records. Staff request a closed session to discuss the bids, the cost of the city, and the potential level of service that will impact the amount of public funds established for the assessor services.
Thank you. I have one question before I take motions to go into closed session. Was there one bid that was more or less than the other, or were they direct comparable on cost?
There were, there were three options for each of the bids, and it depends on the service level that we look at, that we identify what, what company. The Accurate had lower costs, but there were other things to consider.
Thank you. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion we move into closed session to discuss the RFPs for assessment services.
Can you read the full?
The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, par. 1, par. E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche, I think he was fastest. With that, it's a roll call vote.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
All right, with that, we will go into closed session as soon as we're off the air.
Looks like we are back in open session. No comments at this time, however, when action is taken, we will be making a public announcement. With that, we will move on to new business, 12B, discussion and possible action regarding discussion and any permissible, permissible action regarding city administrators' performance and evaluation and city administrator's contract. For this, I will turn it over to Alder Gaskell.
Sure, we're just in the process of the annual review for our city administrator, so I would like to make the motion that we move into closed session to discuss performance and evaluation. Common council may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding city administrator performance and evaluation and city administrator contract as authorized by section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin statutes, consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona, and section 19.85, parent one, parent E for the deliberation of or negotiation for purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session.
Sorry, go ahead. How are you done?
May reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alder Cogan. Now, this is a roll call vote.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
With that, we are in closed session. Over, over, under, as you took the wrong bet?
Yeah.
Oh, could someone get the, not that there's anyone out there, but...
Oh.
I'll get the door.
My actual dogs, this is from a family summer picture. Yeah, they printed them on their socks. Isn't that awesome? Oh, I don't want them.
Or give them back to me if you don't want it.
I don't want them.
All right, we're live, though, just F Y N.
Yep.
But, all right, let's finish the meeting, though. We took no action during the closed session, and next we will move on to the next item, which is new business continued, and that is item C, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the operator licenses. Claire Clark?
Thank you, I need a motion, please, to approve the operator licenses presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Coles, there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they are approved. We are now on to adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Alder Cole, second by Alder Ricky. Oh, Gaskell, sorry. Someone over there, Alder Gaskell, second by Alder Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.